Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our Laredo College Facilities Master Plan Town Hall meeting. We are at the South Campus, and today is the 17th of September. We're in the process of waiting for more people to show up, but in lieu of time, we're going to begin. So our master plan process has been in existence now for almost a year, or a little over a year, the campus process. Our Board of Trustees has approved at that time, after a RFP and a committee report presented to the Board of Trustees. We selected an architectural firm out of San Antonio, O'Connell and Robertson. They come to us with a lot of experience in this kind of work, working with school districts and community colleges, master planning, in bond elections, in architectural design. So we're very fortunate to have them help us through this process. Many of our employees were invited, and we had several open forums for people to come in and give opinions about what should Laredo College look like in the next 10 years? And what direction are we headed? What are some of the programs that we're looking at in expansion? And also, what were some of our definite needs? Some of our buildings were evaluated that we picked out, that we knew from a historical standpoint and yet also from a futuristic standpoint. What were we feasibly going to save and remodel and be able to use for instruction? And then what buildings could we consider using for additional offices and support services? So today, we're going to have an opportunity to hear where we are today and hopefully get questions from those in the audience or support from the audience about any other ideas that we haven't yet considered or any things that we have not yet added into this plan. The final presentation will be to the Board of Trustees on November 23rd, I think it is. It's right before we go on holiday for Thanksgiving, so whatever, I think it's November 20th, maybe. And so somebody will look it up, and we'll be doing the exact date before we close today. But it is in November, we'll do the final presentation to the Board of Trustees and then for approval, and then continue to move forward with our plan. And with that, I'd like to welcome our lead designer on this process, Diana Bravo, and the partner of O'Connell Robertson, Mr. Gani Cormejo, who are both going to present to us today where we are, what we've done, how we've gotten here, and where we're headed. So, Emma?
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez, and good morning, everyone. My name is Diana Bravo, I'm an architect and a senior associate with O'Connell Robertson. I also serve as an education practice leader for our San Antonio office. I wanted to maybe just mention a little bit about our firm. This is a very special year for us. We are celebrating 25 years in business, 50 years doing education work. So it's just a special year for us. We are an integrated firm of not just architects, but engineers and designers as well. And we're fortunate to be here with you all and to be part of this process that is really going to set that roadmap for the future of Laredo College. And like Dr. Ramirez mentioned, this is a process that didn't start this year. It actually started last year in complication of 2024. And what you're seeing on the screen is a question that we posted to the audience that day. And we said, "In this process that we're about to embark on, what is your highest hope?" And you're seeing on the screen some of the words that we received from the audience. And those were critical for us in just shaping the vision for this process. So I'm gonna take some time and walk you all through this whole process and what we've gone through. There are several steps in the master plan process, as you're able to see. We have a visioning process, data collection and assessment, a prioritization process, planning and execution. We're wrapping up the last step of this master plan. And I'm gonna go back in time and walk you through this whole process and what we've done. Like Dr. Ramirez mentioned, this is a process where we've engaged several of you as part of it to make sure it's well-informed. So this first process really sets the stage. This is a goal-setting process, this visioning effort, where we collected just heard from you all, what's the mission for the college, what are the goals? We aligned that with your strategic plan and some of the items that we learned about the highest hopes. And with that, we created guiding principles. And guiding principles really for us become that measure of success. And we are gonna keep going back to these through this whole process to make sure that we don't forget the baseline that we set at the beginning. And then these are different principles that are in line with those goals. And you can see there's different times, there's necessities, which were just minimum expectations for this process. And then anchors really to set the bar a little bit higher, make sure we achieve what those goals were. In the next process, we have the data collection process. And this is an important step in this whole process to really try to understand the conditions of the college. And this particular process focuses on what we like to call people and program. So as part of this process, we developed demographics, enrollment projections, labor market analysis. We did utilization studies just to really understand your path and some of your enrollment projections. So this first slide, I'm not gonna go into detail of everything, but this is giving you a high-level summary of this whole process. So enrollment projections, you can see here, there's a big dip in this chart that is 2020, so that is COVID, and this is, obviously it impacted institutions across the board, not just Laredo College. But after that, we've seen just a steady growth since then, and it's projected to continue to grow throughout the years. And this particular slide showcases both Fourth Mackintosh and South Campus. On this next slide, this is the difference study. This is what we call utilization and fill. So this is really trying to understand utilization looks at how many times the classroom during utilized throughout the day and throughout the week. And then fill is when they're utilized, how filled are the spaces? So these are two different measures. And we noticed that as far as utilization, the utilization was low across the board on both campuses. But the fill was above 25%, which is really where you wanna see it. So when the spaces were used, they were filled very effectively. And then this is also showing you, we did a labor market analysis. And this is just to make sure that the programs that are being offered are gonna support the community needs and to make sure that students are prepared to go into the workforce and make sure that they have a job essentially to support the community. The next step is our assessment, and this is really the counterpart to data collection. If you remember in that chart that I showed at the beginning, these are together. And this is a similar study, but this is specifically for your buildings. So basically looking at your facilities, looking at your building systems, looking at your infrastructure across the board, really trying to understand the likelihood of buildings and where they're at. And in this process, we had an opportunity to do different assessments. One thing that's important to mention is that this whole process was not done just by us. We do have a team of consultants that are looking at different aspects of these assessments. So we have engineers as part of our team, not just mechanical, electric, plumbing engineers, fuel truck civil engineers, landscape architect, and facilities programming that did the data collection portion. And this whole process, we lean on them to support this assessment portion. So we identified four buildings in both campuses. So for Fourth Mackintosh, it was Kason and Maravillo. And for South Campus, it was Billy Hall and Sacramento Library. So those were buildings we did assessments for them. But we also did assessments for other sites, and we were looking at different aspects like just flow, traffic flow on the sides, access to the side, parking, drainage, just things that we knew through the process that were identified as some concerns and wanted to make sure we did an assessment of those. So this is just showing you that these are the four reports that were developed by our team. So this is information that is more detailed on the findings. So really, at this point halfway through the process, it's all been about information gathering, whether it is vision-wise, just data collection, and the assessments to really make sure that as we move into this next step, we're doing it in an informed manner. This next step, step number four, is really critical because this is where we start setting a critical path. And this is where we look at timeline, budgets, phasing, and try to make that achievable. So in this process, we identify focus goals. And these focus goals were based on a lot of the things that we looked at previously. So the first goals were just looking at career pathways, whether it was adding to existing pathways or providing new aligned with the labor market needs, technology or infrastructure. We know a lot of these types of programs always require newer technology and trying to keep up with that. So how do we plan for that? Safety and access control or safety and security was also identified as a critical component of this process. And just given the nature of the age of some of these buildings, the port maintenance was also something that we looked at. And then last, but for sure not least, student empowerment was critical in our focus goals because everything that we're doing is essentially student-centric, and we wanna serve our students well. And then as secondary goals came just traffic or access into the site and community or outdoor spaces. And with that, with those goals, we then gather around and we're able to develop proposed project lists. So I'm gonna walk you through some of these, just kinda like our understanding of the needs. So this first line that you're seeing, this is for both campuses. So this is not for one or the other. So we identified the need for security and technology improvements, both from an access control and network infrastructure. We also talked about central plan improvement. Again, as you're growing programs, you wanna make sure that you keep up with infrastructure to support that. And also landscape improvements. We talked a lot about not just the pedestrian pathway, but also the drop-off and pickup areas. We know how stressful weather can be here in Laredo. So wanna make sure that we provide a safe space for students to be drop off or pick up and that they have a gathering space or an outdoor learning area. And then we also talked about the importance of wayfinding and site branding, especially to bring equity between both campuses. When we go specifically into each campus, these are the ones that were identified as part of it. So the C-Lab Science Complex, modernization. Again, when you see modernization, because of the age of the facility, we're looking at improving it, whether it is from a building system standpoint or accessibility, just different components. But we're not recommending you change the program, it's just improvements to the facility itself. Kason Student Center was also identified. We know this is a space that is highly utilized by the students, so how do we then modernize it to better serve them? We talked about the Ilanafenia Building and improvements to the recasting area specifically. We talked about the Miami Gym Modernization, similar to Kason, just to improve on the spaces. And then the Memorial Hall Modernization was also identified. For P1 Building, we start talking about opportunities to convert that into an industrial lab, given that it is a high-volume space and ideal to support some of those goals for that program. We talked about some need to support the police building with a standby generator. For the Giri Library, again, highly utilized space, whether it's for tutoring, for studying, for gathering, and an opportunity to improve that area from what we call education suitability, which essentially means making sure that the spaces are well-suited for different learning modalities and aligned to them. And then lastly, we talked about the challenges of side access and how can we improve that entrance drive into Fourth Mackintosh to support just traffic circulation in that area. For South Campus, we identified some needs as well. Billy Hall also, because of the age, just improvements or modernization. We talked about the need of a multi-purpose gathering space, really where this land could be as part of a modernization or a separate building, but it was discussed that that was a need in this campus. Student Services Building or Support was also identified, trying to bring equity between both campuses as far as student services goes. And then Sacramento Library also was identified for modernization, given that the age of the building and some challenges that were identified as part of the assessments. The Global Logistics Transportation Program building, this was discussed as a need to enhance an existing program and maybe opportunities to continue to grow that program. So we talked about extending the building and also talked about expanding on the driving path that you have on site. And I'll talk a little bit about the strategy for this in later slides. We also talked about some of the traffic challenges coming into one of the parking lots and how could we improve on that? And then lastly, aside from the pedestrian mall, we talked about this campus hosts a lot of your big events, outside events. So an opportunity for an event quad here on campus to support those events and also to address some of the drainage challenges in the area that we're proposing in. So after we identified the projects, we then had to sit down and say, okay, how can we make this achievable? So we moved into, oh, before we gotta get there. For the projects, again, we were highly focused on creating student-centered spaces and making sure that whether it is on indoor spaces or outdoor spaces, we wanna make sure we're serving students well. And we create inviting spaces for them to be on campus. And we created inviting spaces for them to be on campus. We also looked at, based on the market analysis, just the need to continue to support highly tied amounts of programs. And what did that look like? So like I said, after we created the list of projects, we then started looking at different phases in how to achieve all these projects in a manner that makes sense, not just financially, but time-wise or how they could be classified for different funding opportunities. So we identified three phases. We identified Phase One, which is gonna be highly focused on naked and security inside improvements, which one thing that's important to mention is this is an ongoing phase at this point. There are certain efforts that the college has started and some of the items listed in this space that you'll be seeing here shortly. For Phase Two, we really focused on the park maintenance-type projects because those could be accomplished potentially with a different funding source. So opportunities to group those together in support of that. And then Phase Three, we really identified capital improvement projects, which essentially would have to happen with a bond in place. So what you'll be seeing in the next slide is just how these were classified. So for Phase One, these are the projects that we talked about earlier. And those would collectively be about 38 million. Now, like I said earlier, some of the efforts listed here are already happening as we speak. We started this process a year ago, we've gone through it. So I know some of these are happening right now. For Phase Two, these are the items that we could identify as the park maintenance and opportunities to utilize funding through maintenance tax notes. These projects collectively are about 26 million. And the reason why these are classified within this space is because these are primarily modernization or building improvements, so not necessarily programmatic changes or building issues. Those would then be identified on Phase Three, which would be your capital improvement projects. And for those, we're looking at about 145 million in support of that. And then we move into the planning. And the planning really is, now that we understand our priorities, now that we know how we can do this in different phases or different packages, what's the best strategy to really accomplish that? Because there's also economies of scale, right? How do we start grouping these efforts to where it makes more sense? So in this process, you'll be seeing in the next slides just some of the site strategies that we developed to achieve this. I will say, this is a work in progress. We're still finalizing these. I'll be showing some site plans, some sketches. And we'll continue to work on this. And in the final presentation that we do in November, we'll have more visual efforts to share with everyone. So this is just your current campus for Fourth Macintosh, as it exists today. And then in this next slide, you're seeing buildings in light blue are the buildings that we're proposing to have some level of modernization done to them. And then you see a small section next to P1 identifying improvements to the outdoor spaces in that building to support outdoor learning for that potential industrial lab in that building. And then this is some of the early sketches that our landscape architect has developed for that pedestrian mall and the flavor of what those spaces are gonna start to be, whether it becomes outdoor gathering or just plain shade structures and supportive to circulation throughout the day. And then for South Campus, for this campus, this is your current site plan as it exists today. And then on this slide, similarly, you see Billy Hall and Zapparini Library in the light blue. These are recommended to have modernization. And then the ones in the darker blue are the additions that we're proposing, actual standalone buildings. So you can see on the left side, a transportation building. And then on the right side, potentially a student services building with an event quad directly south of that. And this, similar to the previous slide, this starts to give you some ideas and concepts that we're entertaining. So this starts to show not just the pedestrian mall, but it shows that event quad and opportunities that we have to create an amphitheater, maybe a food truck area for these events that we know you host in this campus. So really, like I said, we're transitioning into that final phase of execution. We're trying to finalize all these site plans to be shared as well as these visual efforts to try to paint the picture of what these potential projects are gonna be. With that, I'll open it up for any questions that anyone might have.
I've got a question.
Okay.
When you talk about modernization, what does that entail? Is that just the facade of the building? Or is there something internally in the building that we've done? Is it cosmetic? Is it technology? What is it?
So modernization really focuses on different aspects. So we talked specifically about building systems. A lot of these buildings being older facilities just need a lot of improvements in the building system. So HVAC, plumbing, we're gonna look at accessibility as well. Obviously, codes have changed over time and have different requirements. We also focus on educational suitability, making sure that the spaces are well-suited in support of the new program or the activity that is intended to happen in that building. So more than the exterior, we're really looking at the interior and making sure we modernize the spaces in support of the instruction or the program that's happening in them.
Any other questions? Any questions from the people on line? Thank you, Ms. Bravo. And I do wanna take a moment to thank our Vice President for Finance and Administration, Mr. Cesar Vela, who's been leading the charge on campus for us through this master plan process. And certainly, Ms. Bravo and Mr. Cormejo, for your advice and all of the information that you brought forth to us through this process. With -- if there are no more questions, then today's open forum will end. And we thank everyone who's watching online and certainly hope that the future continues to bring new programs, more expansion, more students, and a stronger and more viable place to live and learn here in Laredo and in our community. Established in 1947, Laredo College is committed to the student success of all students. And so we're very grateful to your help and certainly to our Laredo College campus and our Board of Trustees for supporting all of our expansion and growth. So with that, thank you to the Laredo community, to our taxpayers, our donors, and certainly all of our students who have chosen to come to Laredo College and our employees who make this place a vibrant place for everyone to learn. Thank you.